Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Chambers. It is Monday, February 26, 7:10 PM. Thank you for joining us for the Town Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By Pledge of Allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councillor O'Clair.
She will not be here this evening.
Councillor Carrasco. Councillor Clements.
Present.
Councillor De Pietro. Councillor Manah.
Present.
Councillor Morales.
Present.
Councillor Nash.
Present.
Councillor Steve.
Present.
Six present.
Okay, we have a form. All right. Agenda item number three is to consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of February 12, 2018.
Second.
Okay. If you'd -- Councillor Nash?
Thank you. One other correction, Madam Chair, thank you. I do have the version that was corrected with the recommendations that both you and I had made.
Uh huh.
And I'm trying to find, I think it's on page four, just to make sure that her name is spelled correctly, about a little more than halfway down the page. It's Tia, T-I-A.
Oh, right. Oh. You missed that part.
But thank you for making, or for Yvonne, for making the correct change of the spelling of the last name. Thank you.
And I appreciate the response, those who are able to get to the minutes and then get them back with their corrections. Jelison, you notice that we don't delete, we cross off, and we add red if we want to make a comment, and then we all have the same suggestions in front of us this evening, or as you just did, make another correction. So I think it's working out. I appreciate Max's effort on that, and we'll continue to move forward with good, accurate minutes. Okay. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor? Okay, we're good. It's unanimous. Okay. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee summaries. The relevant minutes will be read at each agenda item that is on tonight's agenda. So we have 4A, General Government. That's Councillor Steve's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a meeting on February 21, and there's a couple of the items that are on this agenda. Let's see, let me know where here. Let's see, number nine, uh, let's see, number 11, was it this one? Number, uh, and the other issue that we dealt with is, that are not on this particular agenda are, we just briefly, we started the discussion of a military pay issue and the idea of whether or not we wanted to adopt a section of state law, which I didn't put in the minutes, and I really should, um, a section of state law that would make whole those who are called up for overseas duty in the same manner, essentially of deployments for those, for people who are going to the National Guard weekend duties that we currently do now. So we're going to still keep discussing that. We've got a few other issues we're looking at with that particular, with that particular issue, and going to try to come forward with something in the fairly near future to finalize that. According to, I'll just summarize the notes here because it was a fairly long discussion. One of the issues that Karen Harnoy brought up was the fact that the schools, at the moment it seems like there's only one person affected, however, and that Karen Harnoy talked with the schools, and that they aren't aware of anyone that they know of to date, and didn't think it would have a whole lot of impact on the schools. That's obviously our largest employer base, or employee base in the town. She said we could vote to pay them, pay them starting from the vote date or retroactively. The former would cost, for the particular individual that's affected at the moment, would cost from 8,600 to 9,400, depending on whether the military pay rises 2% or not. And whereas retroactive would total around 11,000 for the service for maybe a year to 18 months. In this case, I think it would be for the rest of the fiscal year. And so we have not finished that yet. And also, we have an issue with the Municipal Building Committee bylaw, which is also on this agenda, so I'll get to those when we get to that point. And we also talked about a new council role regarding the annual release of executive session minutes. We're not finished with that yet, so we will be bringing that back up when we finish it. And I do not have a meeting scheduled at the moment, but I do have to have one in the next week or so, so.
And if I could add for you, the section of law, in case anyone is interested in looking at this in terms of the military pay, it's Mass General Law 33, Section 59, and it's about making whole. And your discussion, it's just, military pay is a lot of times less than your standard pay, and the ability to, the town has the right to, a select board or a Town Council has the right to vote in accepting this state law, which would then make up the difference in that pay while they are deployed.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to be clear, kind of, you're giving all those numbers, just to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
Right.
So, again, further discussion at your next General Government meeting.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Department of Public Works, Councillor De Pietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In brief, we had quite a few agenda items, first of which were reviewing the minutes from our meeting of January 3 of 2018, which was approved unanimously. Subcommittee discussed the proper demise of surplus equipment DPW has in several locations. As a result of detailed pictures and descriptions provided by Heather, it was unanimously decided that none of it was worth more than scrap metal. And we voted unanimously to recommend the council to allow Heather to scrap it, with the proceeds going directly to the general fund thereafter. We voted to recommend the council to authorize to the Town Manager to approve StanTech's proposal letter for professional services related to reclamation of gray water coming from the wastewater treatment plant. This is a, actually a product that the town is making a profit on, selling to Millennium Power Plant. The additional cost for services by StanTech to keep this operation happening would be $6,850. The motion passed unanimously. We discussed wastewater treatment plants with Heather, who gave us an update, as work continues under StanTech's guidance to upgrade the bio towers, which I use to treat the sludge, the solids, and will allow us to keep this process happening on site. Further ferric chloride is now being used instead of an aluminum treatment. Our aluminum discharge is nearing the limits that were allowed by the state, so the process has now been switched over to using a ferric. Hmm. I'm sorry? Thank you. And this may help eliminate some of the smoke coming out of the landfill from the wastewater treatment plant, from what I understand. Heather gave us an update on the Hook and Hamilton Street projects. The committee that this project qualifies for the Federal Transportation Improvement Program were not on the list yet, but she anticipates would be considered by 2023. We should have an answer by August or September, according to Heather. We need approximately $100,000, which will get us engineering to the point where it's 75% completion level to present, in order to get on this list. The total design, she estimated, would be somewhere in the amount of about a half a million dollars. Am I off, councillor?
No.
Oh. I thought I was getting in shape. No. Heather discussed with us the rail trail erosion update. The trail's now walkable, but as trees have fallen and some of the areas are eroding, there still needs to be some work done there. Casella is paying for some of these repairs, but it's still unknown as to whether DLT will accept Casella's engineering or not. Ultimately, it's a responsibility of the state, believing as it would be, would be dangerous for our citizens, so it is being addressed through the town. Last discussion was regarding road regrindings and repairs. I'm looking forward to setting up another future DPW meeting with Mike Murphy, and who is, this gentleman's fairly well-versed in the regrinding and process, and I think Heather might argue it's not the greatest fix, but we'd at least like to explore it in DPW and get her opinion on it after Mike makes a presentation. And that's all I have for you, Madam Chair.
So you mentioned you're going to be setting up a meeting, your next meeting will be approximately?
At this point, we're looking at first to second week of March.
Okay. So I would like you to add another agenda item onto that.
Certainly.
I've gotten a number of inquiries in regard to the purchase of the forklift, including one from your citizen member, Steve Lazo, former councillor, with some concerns, and so I'd like you to put that on for discussion, please, a thorough discussion on the purchase of the forklift at the DPW.
Would you like to do that within next week or so, or?
As soon as you put your meeting together, and then we can notify your committee. Okay.
Very good, absolutely. Happy to do it.
Thank you. Okay. Just for note, councillors, you have a, you have a second attachment on there, just, we haven't discussed that yet, so, just, it was an accidental staple on it, apparently in the office, so. Okay, thanks. All right. Moving on. Agenda item 4C, Education and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, a meeting of the Education Human Services Subcommittee, joint with the Town Council, was held on Tuesday, February 13, after being canceled and rescheduled due to the previous week's snow. Items that were discussed include two that are on tonight's agenda, including item number 10 and number 13, so I won't elaborate on those at this time. Draft minutes are included in everyone's packet, and I will just point out that we have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, and it's currently scheduled for the George Parent Community Room, which is right here next to the Town Manager's office. Agenda's been posted. Thank you.
Very good. 4D, Planning and Development, would be Councillor Claire. She's not able to be here. Did we have another meeting?
I don't believe we did.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on. 4E, Protections of Persons and Property, Councillor Manah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any minutes to read at this time, and no meetings planned at this time. Thank you.
Councillor Manah, have you talked with the Town Manager or anyone yet in terms of the dispatch? It's been months, and I heard the proposal was done a while ago, or was going to be done. Do we have the numbers, and are we having, can we get a meeting on that?
I have not been contacted about that.
Because I don't want to end up at budget season in a budget meeting.
Sure.
And being thrown that here's what we're doing, we need to know before that happens, so.
The answer is it is done. Shane was supposed to be setting up a meeting with you to start doing that, so it is completely ready to go. I don't know if he held it because I was on vacation last week or not, but I would expect it anytime.
I'm sure. No, we didn't.
No, I said I expected he might have held it because I was on vacation.
Oh, okay.
But he probably will be doing it in contact with you as soon as tomorrow to set it up.
Perhaps you could reach out and ask if he needs a meeting.
I'll reach out to Chief Lexon. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, through you, if I could elaborate on EHS minutes, they were included with the packet with the next meeting's agenda.
Oh.
So if you haven't seen them, please check there, and if not, if anyone reaches out to me, I'll send them. Otherwise, Yvonne has them. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I had seen them, but for some, they weren't in the.
Just one page.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then. Moving on to Chairman's announcements. We have a few. As was noted, we did go into executive session last meeting, and we did decide to, we reviewed a number of executive session meeting minutes, which had not been done in many, many years. So I, and we did take a vote, which I'm telling you, that we will be releasing a number of dates, if you are so interested. They are 6/4, 2012, 6/18, 2012, 8/13, 2012, 10/15, 2012, November 4, 2013, February 24, 2014, March 10, 2014, June 23, 2014, June 15, 2015, February 22, 2016, March 21, 2016, typo there, May 23, 2016, May 26, 2016, June 6, 2016, December 5, 2016, March 30, 2017, May 22, 2017, June 19, 2017, and July 10 of 2017. And we will have a system in place to make sure that we do this in a timely manner. Not all minutes, there'll be minutes that are still not released, there are minutes they may never be released, depending on the situation that, that would have been discussed in executive session, but open meeting law requires us to review on a periodic basis and make sure that these were done. The last time they were done, I believe, was when Chairman Nicole and myself were, we went through and did a few years then. So we took it. Councillor Steve's, thank you very much for your help, and thank all the councillors for working on that and wanting to come up with a process that we will make sure by the end of June every year, that whatever is not necessary to hold will be released and possibly even sooner. But certainly by June is our plan to always release minutes from the previous year, or before that, should the subject matter be closed and does not require to be kept confidential anymore. So, just letting you know that. Okay, there is a Southbridge Business Partnership meeting this Wednesday. It is being held at the Conference Center in Southbridge. It's their monthly networking meeting, and it is at 5:30. So if you are a small business, a large business, any type of business in town, certainly come on and see what the Southbridge Partnership can do for you, or perhaps what you could do for it. And they're a great group of people. I believe they have about 50 or 60 members now, and from all types, manufacturers, the hospital, retail, just about everything. And they've been doing a great job the past year in, in trying to build up our economic development here in Southbridge. So come on and join us. Let's see, next thing. There are, you know, there's always openings. We say it all the time, there are many opens on many committees. I know specifically for, on a couple of them, that are very important, our Council on Disabilities, our Commission on Disabilities, excuse me, has a number of openings. If you are interested in all in that area, please let us know, and we can explain to you what that committee is all about and how you could possibly help here in our community. I would also like to point out that we are trying to reactivate the Agricultural Committee that has kind of been on the wayside for a number of years. We have one gentleman interested, very much so, and it's kind of hard to have a committee of one. So it's supposed to have five members. If agriculture in any way, shape, or form, gardening, the land in general is something that you're interested in, and you would like to participate and see how our community maybe could develop from your ideas and thoughts, I encourage you to get in touch with the Manager's Office, do an interest form, let us know, and we will get right on that with you to, to hopefully reactivate the agricultural committee. So speaking of committees, one last thing for me, subcommittees. You hear us say all the time, we have subcommittees. The town has five subcommittees. They are General Government, Department of Public Works, Education and Human Services, Protections of Persons and Property, and Planning and Development. In that, we are, as councillors, all supposed to be equally divided amongst our committees, and we also have citizen members. So usually each of these committees has two councillors, or three councillors, and a couple of citizens members. And they, that is a great place for all of us to go as often as possible to these subcommittees to learn about the depth of many of the topics that come up here, that get addressed by this council. We're able to ask a lot more questions. Sometimes we don't bring it up here, yet we wait and we ask for more information before it comes up here, so that we can really make sure that the information, once we are here and discussing it, those questions that were asked down there, you might have them too, and we can be prepared to answer them for you. I want you to, I want to let the, you see us, you hear us when I say who is, who is the chair of that committee, but I want you to know who's on it. If you have an issue, you can contact these people, and you can let them know that you would like to discuss something at Subcommittee. You don't always have to come here first. You can call the Town Manager's Office. They can refer to Subcommittee your issue, whether it's roads, or recreation, or just about anything, a safety issue, concern. The Town Manager's Office is a wealth of information to let you know where you should bring that concern. But in the meantime, just so you know who to get in touch with here on our committees, on General Government, Councillor Steve's, as you know, is the chair, Rick Nash is on that committee, Councillor Nash and Councillor Manah, as well as Jaclyn Ryan and Joseph Controna, those are citizens members. They handle pretty much anything that all the other committees don't handle, government contracts, different things like that, and rules and regulations, and charter issues a lot of times. Our Department of Public Works is Councillor De Pietro, and we have Councillor Nash and Councillor O'Clair on there, and we only have one citizens member right now, and that's former councillor Steve Lazo. So again, that's a great committee with a lot of really important topics to our town, all of them are, but certainly roads and infrastructure in all. So if you want to join that one, let us know, we'll get you on the committee. You serve for a year, you can serve again if you choose to. If you don't, you don't have to. And they meet once, maybe twice a month, you know, most of these committees. Education and Human Services, very unique committee, used to love doing it myself, because you have about nine, you have library, and you have Board of Health, and you have veterans, and you have disability, and you have, there's so many. The school is all under EHS, and that's Councillor Nash. And we have two citizens members, Martina Shea and John Daniel. And currently, what we're going to, we had a little issue, so we're moving a few things around, and we're going to have Councillor Morales is going to be on Education and Human Services, and we're still, we're still a little bit short here, we're a little short on council, without Councillor McKenzie, so we just fill in and do the best we can. And certainly, no room for citizen members at the moment, but come to the meetings, they're very informative. PPP, Protections of Persons and Property, Councillor Manah, as I said, and on that, Councillor Morales and Councillor De Pietro serve. And again, only one citizens member, and that's a very important committee, fire, police, all those safety issues, and that's John Denny. And I believe he's new this year, and to see him at every one of the meetings that, you know, I've been to, so, you know, get out there and let us know if you want to help. Planning and Development, that is chaired by Councillor O'Clair, and that has, at this moment, we have Councillor Carrasco on that with two citizens members, Andrew Gullickson and Michael Marquetti. So again, I applaud the citizens who step up and take an interest in the community and give us their input. It's very helpful. Many hands make light work. So join us, and be part of your community, and help this government. We really need you. And that's all I have for my announcements. Thanks for listening. And we'll go on to Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As people may know, I was on vacation last week, so I don't have a lot to report tonight. Our efforts really, right now, are focused on budget, so the week before I went on vacation, I was continuing to meet with each individual department head and going through their budgets with them. All of the departments, they're done in terms of the individual departments. We are going to go back and re-review the Board of Health budget, Department of Health budget, but other than that, departments are done. Next, we'll be working on receipts, revenues for the town, and we're still going to, obviously we're going to be talking to the school system about their budget. That's going to be, clearly everybody understands, it's going to be the important budget of the year, because there's just so many issues going on within our school system, and the finances and the charter school. That's going to really take a lot of effort, and it'll be interesting to hear what everybody has to say at Subcommittee when we get to that part of the budget. But other than that, I have no other reports, and thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item, Agenda item number seven is swearing in and presentations, and we have nothing this evening, so we're going to move on to Citizens Forum. We ask that if you would like to come up and speak to anything that's not on the agenda, you come to the podium, give us your name and your address. You'll have five minutes.
My name's John Pulaski, 3 Jenison Street. I'm going to ask this now, you might be telling me this relates to Agenda item 11, but it really doesn't, because I tried to go down this path at the Subcommittee meeting, and as you pointed out, it's not specifically relating to the subject matter of what you're voting on, so where it relates to that property, though. I'm very concerned and confused about that property. Why am I confused? Well, there are two triangular properties up by the landfill that have been referred to over the last year as a triangular property. So I went into that meeting last week thinking it was the other triangular property. Now, what shocked me, it really threw me off at the meeting, was something that was discussed. Now, and Mr. Marquetti has, over the weekend, coincidentally, found video of a meeting, a hearing, which Councillor Clements chaired. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of questions were asked, a lot of information was given out, and what I learned at that meeting is something that apparently is not true. What I learned at that meeting is that that land was owned, according to, by Mr. Faris, by Casella and the Town of Southbridge. So I understand now that's not the case. What he probably meant was it wasn't owned by Casella, that it was leased by Casella. So that's why I went in there confused. Now, I'm more confused, and would have had much better questions, at that Subcommittee meeting the other day, the General Government Subcommittee meeting, if I knew what property we were talking about. Mr. Zodos in the past has suggested, and it was one of the best suggestions I heard during all of this process, it's really nice to have maps of the properties we're discussing, so we all know what we're talking about. You guys know what you're talking about, you get in your packages. Where, we don't, we don't really know all the time what's in those packages. I bothered two of you during lunchtime, or during your dinnertime last week, asking questions. I didn't take too much of either one of your times. I appreciate you both being courteous and answering my questions. I tried to keep both conversations under two or three minutes. This is my concern. I got to be careful, and I also only have five minutes. I'm not, I don't want to offend anybody, but it's my experience working on this. I'll give you a quick example, 11 years ago, we made decisions. There's X amount of tons that's going to fit in, it's going to be 20 years. These were experts, the towns experts, not Casella's. Casella wasn't at fault here. Our experts said there was enough space to make that property, there's abundant space till 2028 or beyond, we're going to get $150 million. That came out of our lawyer's mouth, but it was really $108 million plus considerations, worth additional money. And then, you know, and council is based on what the professionals and experts said, they made decisions, and it turned out, it just so happened that a few of us were offering projections that were much more accurate. We were getting paid, but it seems we, in that case, did our homework better than the experts and the professionals. So now I'm seeing words here that trigger my concern, and which shocks me the most, and no offense to our President Trump, but a lot of people imply he's, and he'll say it himself, he's not big on regulations. Since that landfill's gone in, we have experienced seven years of Mr. Reagan, four years of George Bush, eight years of the Clintons, eight years of W. Bush, eight years of the Obama administration, and suddenly, now that the landfill is closing, Mr. Trump's FAA is saying, oh, we got to make some changes on that property to protect the airport. Why? All of a sudden, after 30 years, is the government, federal government, telling us we have to make changes? It just doesn't make sense to me. And then there's the word consideration. I notice our consideration is, you do this for us, we're going to do this for you. Normally, consideration, from when I see it used, it's, it means someone's doing something for something. So my concern is, is this land being sold, is Casella buying this? I don't think so. Why would they?
Okay, so two things, Mr. Pulaski, if I may. First off, you have five minutes, and we'll give you two if you want them, but let me just, because I wanted to clarify some things with myself after that meeting, too. You have to, I'll give you the map, you can have mine. The yellow line is where FAA is allowing, the line that was red is where the standards were already in place. These restrictions were already there because it was under the FAA. They're now allowing the line to be yellow, and they want to keep those restrictions on that land that were always on that land. That's, we are agreeing to, even though the property line is changing because of the, because of the reservation, the, because we're leaving that land in conservation land.
You just answered the question.
Right. But the line, the same restrictions are staying, that we're not, they just want us actually sign it and say, you realize the property line changed, even though it's not the red line anymore, you better keep those same restrictions on that property. So if you want to.
So is it still going to belong to the Town of Southbridge?
Yes.
Is it part of the airport, or just the town?
The town.
At this point, it's part of the town.
The town.
As opposed to airport property.
Right. They turned, yeah. But you see the yellow line?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the new line for the airport. The red line was the old line, and those restrictions were in place. They want to make sure that even though they've given permission for the airport to move that yellow line, that we keep all these restrictions that were already there and in place, and even more so by making us sign this letter saying we're going to do it. We never signed a letter before, it was just part of FAA. Since that land isn't part of FAA now, they want to make sure we're still restricting it.
See, now if this was.
Does that make sense, though? A little more, I mean, I'm speaking.
It makes all sense in the world, and I know there's a lot of work, you know, it's easy. easy to be a Monday morning quarterback, but it'd be so nice, in this information age, if your packets could somehow go online, I wouldn't have even gone to the meeting, if I knew, because it looks, I'm not saying nobody, I'm not saying anyone in town is doing anything sneaky, it just didn't make sense, and I know there's dirty dirt on this property.
And to your credit, you raised those concerns, and because, we were looking at that that night, that got given to us just that evening, I asked, I said, where are some maps, Ms. Harnoy, because she was filling in, and she made sure we had a few. But as I looked at it and the lines, I could barely read the print, if you notice, you can't, so I zoomed in and I.
Can I keep this, or is this yours?
No, you can keep that one.
Thank you.
Zoomed in and looked at it, and the next day, I questioned her again, and I said, I just want to be clear that, that yellow line now, the new, the new FAA line, and, you know, and we talked about that, and she was completely there, and I believe I'd spoken with Heather about that, too, DPW Director Blakely. So it made me feel better, like even better, that it wasn't something new and grand that we were doing, those were already on because that was under FAA. Now that it's not, FAA's saying, I don't care whether we're, we're in control, you need to keep those covenants on, and we want you to sign this paper, you, the town council has to vote and put it in this document, that you agree, they are never going to raise the, the requirements will never be any less than what we've already told you that they have to be, and we've already been operating with those, under those requirements.
Now, it was Mr. Zodos who, I don't want to take credit, he's the one that's been bringing it up for 11 years, that we really ought to have these maps. It's just one of the things, some of you realize this, you have so many things on your plate, some of you may not realize this, this land is not, okay, at least according to the deed right now, and site assigned land, that goes on the deed, this land is not site assigned. So we're keeping the federal government happy with this, and the towns let things go, like there's parts of the landfill that are in charlton, but it's, you know, it wasn't done on purpose, probably, so, you know, no one's coming down. But there's something on this property, the flare, and that flare is an essential part of the landfill, and that's not site assigned, and it's not that I want a site assignment, but especially when the landfill is gone, that's, might be a problem with the future DEP. We got a Democrat in the State House, they may come down on us, we may get, deal with fines, there's got to be a way, you know, without a site assignment, where you can go to the DEP and say, hey, look, this was an oversight, maybe the people could sell a thought they owned it, maybe they thought it was site assigned, so that we can get all our ducks in a row. And thank you for your time, and thank you for giving me more than my five minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to address the council with anything that's not on the agenda?
Good evening. Anne Marie, Anne with an E, Lewis, L.E.W.I.S., Lebanon Hill Road, Southbridge, Mass. I come to you tonight, good evening to all the councilors and all. Southbridge folks and Southbridge folks, pardon me, I have a disease. My point tonight is focused on Legion Field in the back of the cemetery, where there are one plots for the deceased loved ones, flat stones. I, 11 years ago, I came to public forum because we were not on equal ground as the rest of the cemetery. They had uprights, they had flats, they were able to mow that. It's been 11 years, I told you that, I was at public forum, my brother Stephen Weatherby has been at rest for 22 years. I visit often, unlike a goat in the field, I take pictures. I take pictures just to have them, but there are policies, there are rules. I thank the Town of Southbridge for amending the policy at the Legion Field at Oak Ridge But with all my heart and soul, I understand that we love our lost loved ones. The town was gracious in understanding of my concern, it was amended in 2007. The decorations in the policy, we were allowed mementos on the gravestones, we were allowed flowers in the policy. I know people are going to be angry, sad, they're going to mourn their lost loved ones. Someone yelled at me the other day, then could not stop apologizing to me. I know what I've been doing for 22 years, very intuitive, I watch it. This is going to be my last time that I share this with you, because I know there's been complaints to the DPW director. Now, what I am about to say, for many, there is no planting of shrubs and flowers, that is not part of the policy. There is no white gates, I am very sorry that I have to tell you that. There is no, I find this appalling, empty liquor bottles, that is unacceptable. I had an idea, at home, remove all that stuff from the cemetery, follow the policy and the rules. At home, your loved ones' favorite spot, space, chair, make a shrine for them, go outside and do that for them. I have a shrine on my desk upstairs for my lost loved ones. We have to respect the town.
All in favor for two minutes?
Okay, grief is not something you complete, but endure. Grief is an element of yourself, a tension of your being. Grief is the worst pain in the world. Acceptance and adjustment in your own time. God bless you and yours. Thank you, Southbridge, Mass. I've lived here all my life, thank you for all, just because. Warm regards.
Ms. Lewis, thank you for bringing your concerns to us. I'm going to ask that Councilor De Pietro adds an agenda item to his DPW meeting as well, to discuss the policy at the Oak Ridge Cemetery, particularly the Legion Field area, all the cemetery technically. This is a concern that's been brought before, and I know we all, I have people buried there, many do, and we all want to observe them, but as you say, there are policies, no reasons for them, and I'd like to hear from DPW in terms of how this impedes or, you know, affects us as a community in terms of maintaining that cemetery for all, so if you could.
Madam Chair, perhaps it's me dropping the ball on this, but I was approached by both the Town Manager and Heather from Department of Public Works. We certainly need to have a follow-up conversation, and yes, there certainly will be an agenda item on upcoming DPW, addressing this issue, absolutely.
So as soon as he knows his meeting, it'll be posted on the website, and as he said, he'll try to do something for next week, so it'll be an agenda item. Okay, so if you plan to attend, I'm just saying, you can't hear me? I said we will put it on the next DPW agenda for the meeting, it'll probably be next week, and it will be posted on the website, so you'll know the time and the location if you plan to attend and, and have more that you want to say. Okay, or to hear the comments from our director or anyone else. Okay, thank you. Councilor De Pietro?
If I may, Madam Chair, if, if the young lady would be so kind as to give me her information, I would be very happy to call her in person and make sure she has an opportunity to attend that meeting.
So if you could leave a name and a number, if you have a chance to, or, or call, you know, maybe leave it on the podium and we can get it afterwards, or?
Or I could simply leave them a message, just like my neighbors anyway.
Oh, their neighbors, okay, we can find them.
Yeah, we'll find them, where we live.
Thank you very much, either way. Absolutely. All right. We're good, we're got it, we got it under control. A name and a phone number? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor De Pietro, we'll move on that. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something that is not on the agenda? Please come forward, name, address.
This is the Lebanon Hill night, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. As a member of the Town's Conservation Commission, I wanted to draw your attention to this little brochure. It's in several places of the Town Hall, including at the back of the council chambers and on the board across from the town clerk's office. It will be at the library tomorrow, and it's on the town's website. And from that, you go to Boards and Committees, Clicks on Conservation Commission, and there's a blue box on the left-hand side, one for public comments and for the brochure. The Conservation Commission is tasked with protecting wetland resources, it wants to work with you to allow you to do your project and to protect these valuable resources, which benefit everyone. So how do vernal pools, streams, and wetland areas benefit everyone? They are important for water purification, stormwater, and flood control, pollution prevention, and as a habitat for plants and animals. These areas protect and maintain our health and help the town's functioning. So before you begin a landscaping or a construction project near a cattail marsh, flood plain, vernal pool, stream, or river, pick up a brochure, call us, or come to a Conservation Commission meeting. The meeting dates are listed on the town website or outside the town clerk's office. We generally meet on the first and third Thursday of each month in the McCann Room, that's in the basement of Town Hall downstairs here, at 6:30 PM. Our next meeting is this Thursday, March 1st. We want to work with you to protect our resources for the entire community.
Thank you.
Mike Marquetti, Southbridge resident, I just wanted to make sure that when the agenda item comes up on the covenant, that we have a chance to talk, to ask questions. I know that Mr. Polowski started to get into it.
Yeah.
And during Citizens Forum, but, okay.
No problem.
I'll just reserve then.
Yep. Is there anyone else? Okay, I don't see anybody, so we are going to move on. All right, Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Accept Volunteer Services of Mark Soper of Southbridge to Help Open Up the Plimpton Street Extension McKinstry Trail.
So moved.
Councilor Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that was one of the agenda items on our last general government meeting, and specifically, what we discussed was this, was that Will Canoyer brought it, brought up the proposal to us, because she was talking to Mr. Soper about the fact that the tornado of June 2011 had knocked out a section of the McKinstry Trail about 100, maybe 150 yards wide. And if you, if ever, you've ever been up that way, you know that it's completely impassable at this point, you can't get to it from either end of the, of the trail, because you've got piles of, of trees literally hanging over each other, and it probably climbs up 15, 20, maybe even 40 feet in some places. So Mr. Soper is offering to use his own equipment to go through the trail and clear it out and reopen the trails, because he said he, because he likes hiking it, and he thought it'd be a, a good thing to do for the rest of the community. He pointed out that he, since you can't get any equipment down there, he'll basically be just him and a chainsaw, although, so, and I just, I pointed out during the course of discussion that the Trails Committee, and I, I noted with Scott and I, it might have been Ken Pickren who mentioned it, actually, that, that the, the committee had looked at clearing it back shortly after the tornado and was concerned about it being too dangerous. But it looks like that if, if Mr. Soper is willing to do it and is careful, and we have a, we have a covenant here that will sign off on, that he's willing to sign off on to waive liability for the town, if that happens, then, as Councilor De Pietro put it, then we could get 10 times the amount of work that would happen if we had to go through the proper processes to do it. So the committee voted 4 to 0 to approve the proposal, and so, to your name.
Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through to the Town Manager. I, I really think this is a good idea, and I, you know, I admire Mr. Soper for coming forward and volunteering his services. Whose property exactly is this, the rail trail? Is it the town's, is it the state's? And are we, even though we have this, we do require, like, insurance and stuff like for our subcontractor drivers, I understand what you're, I've been told before that, you know, town people can't go on private property and just do work when the graffiti bylaw is going through and all, so, just, although I really like the idea, I'm really concerned.
First of all, thank you, and just so you know, I had the same exact questions you did before I went on vacation, those questions were supposed to be addressed at the subcommittee levels, I'm going to let Gus answer as to how those resolve. Frankly, as I was sitting here, I was thinking, we had talked about before I left, a waiver and indemnity agreement, and I'm not sure if Rob drafted this up or his attorney drafted it up, so I'll let Gus answer that question for me as well.
Okay, actually, thank you for mentioning that. When, when Will was talking about that, he mentioned that Will and had talked to our town attorney about this, so this was drafted by Rob, and he was saying that, I guess, there had been in the past some sort of an indemnity agreement previously, but I don't know if he had, wasn't able to find it or whatnot, so they drafted a new language for this particular thing, could, and figured that something similar to this could be used going forward. As far, so, so Rob was, was, had been concerned and looked at it and determined that this would work, Karen seemed to be, seemed to be, seemed to be, what's the word I want? Seemed to be satisfied that this would be protecting the town effectively. And to your previous question, the way the property is set up, as I understand it, is the, the trail itself runs along a stretch of, of basically easement that is technically our road, although it's, it's a paper road, it doesn't, doesn't really exist, it's an extension of Plimpton Street. However, it crosses property that at this stretch is primarily state property, it's Division of Fish and Wildlife land, but the right-of-way is actually ours, as I understand it, so.
And there's no contracts, there's no money involved, Councilor Manna, it's strictly a matter of volunteer service, it's like us doing town cleanup on the roads, we pick up trash in the name of the town, dump it in receptacles, and we do work for the community, and that's what he's looking to do here.
With a chainsaw, though.
That's his own chainsaw, his own.
I get it, I totally get it, I just, it just makes me nervous.
We use the grabbers, you know, those, it's quite dangerous. And we use tools for the Christmas decorations.
This is, this is a little different, so, will he have help doing this, I mean, or is it just going to be him?
He, he said that he expected it to primarily be him, I don't know if he's planning on recruiting other people to help him or not.
So if he does recruit other people to help them, him, well, they have to sign one of these as well, and will he, you know, he'll have to let, inform the town that that's happening.
So, again, I'm going to talk to Rob a little bit more about this, because I want to make sure that this is clear, but, but my understanding was that this was going to be his company, but he was going to be doing all but he was going to be doing all the work because as Counselor Steves pointed out, you can't get, it's very difficult to get any equipment onto this property. And if he can't get the equipment on it, he essentially said it was going to be him himself, so. But I would say to you that I will look at that issue with Rob some more just to make sure that it's anyone either in his firm or any other individual that works on this. Either they have to sign the release or the release may have to be changed to say the name of his company as well, but I will have the discussion with Rob before we finalize it.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, actually, to be honest with you, I didn't think to ask him whether he was, he was going to specifically recruit other volunteers.
No.
So under the circumstances, would you recommend that we postpone doing this until later or?
If I may add, I would, you could also, I would recommend an amendment that would include to accept the volunteer services of Mark Soper pending the sign-off of waiver and indemnity agreement for himself and any volunteers that he may recruit to participate.
That makes sense.
And that way, each one, yeah, for himself and anyone that he agrees.
Well, I made the motion, so I will, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Or some of this. I mean, I'm just saying if we include that as the ability for him to start the work, that he and anyone that's working with him has to sign a form because it's standard indemnity forms, so.
That's a good idea.
Does that make any sense?
Just to make it clear, and I'm going to make sure that that's enforced and that that's done, so it will happen before anybody goes on that property. Because obviously, your big issue is correct. The one that would concern me most is insurance. If someone in his firm gets hurt, I want to make sure that we're completely released from any liability. So again, that was the conversation we had with Rob before I left. I just want to follow up, make sure that that's a clear process, but I think the amendment's a good one and I'll ensure that we follow through on that amendment before signing or approving it.
Technically pending the execution of the waiver and indemnity agreement between Mr. Soper, his company and any other volunteer employee or otherwise. Does that make sense? We could add the company, we could add it all.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Subject to, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so, all right. Counselor DePietro, you had a comment?
Madam Chair, obviously a case-by-case basis and I certainly appreciate the concern on the table for liability for the Town, but you're dealing with a gentleman and a family and a business that has been around forever, is certainly well insured and I would hate, and prior to becoming part of this council, I can't tell you the countless times I've been asked for different little projects all over Town over the years, give us a price on this so we can go through subcommittee and this and that, and instead of going to look at it, I just went and fixed the damn thing. So let's not discourage, please, somebody from trying to come and help their own community out. I mean, obviously, liability-wise, yeah, but I mean, let's draw a line here and not make it hard for somebody to help us, help ourselves as a community.
So, Madam Chair. To you, to Counselor DePietro, I respect what you're saying, but I am concerned for the Town and I don't know who Mr. Soper is. All I know is he's someone who enjoys the trail and his family enjoyed the trail. You are in business yourself, so you know a lot of the business people in whatever you're dealing with, but I don't. So, you know, I know Mr. Soper lives in Southbridge. I know he's, he wants to volunteer, he wants to get the trail cleaned up and my concern is for the Town and I missed the set of subcommittee meeting and, you know, shame on me, I wasn't around all weekend to ask anybody, so shame on me for not asking, but, you know, I'm not trying to like discourage people from coming out and volunteering. My concern, I believe, is valid, so.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm with you 100%. I mean, there's, the primary concern of this council is protecting this Town, absolutely. And if I presented it the wrong way, Counselor, I apologize, certainly. I'm just sharing my frustration in years past. That's all I was doing.
The road to good intention is paved with?
No, good deed goes unpunished, Madam Chair.
That one too, I like that one, that's much easier. The good intention one is one I haven't thought of in a while. Okay, so right now we're having an amendment, subject to the, with the addition of, subject to the execution of the, I wrote it down, subject to the execution of the waiver and indemnity agreement for Mr. Soper and his business or, and any volunteers he recruits. I left it at recruits versus employees.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? All right, so that's the amendment and if you don't want it, you don't have to vote it, but so, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, it's unanimous, seven, six. Shrinky. And so the entire item, very basic, vote to accept the volunteer services of Mark Soper of Southbridge to help open up the Plimpton Street McKinstry Extension McKinstry Trail, subject to the execution of the waiver and indemnity agreement by Mr. Soper for himself and his business or any volunteers he recruits. That's the motion on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you, and we will leave it to you to make sure that it gets done. So if we ask for it and it's not there, that's a problem. Right? And I can understand, I think your points, Counselor Manna, where he's using heavier equipment, chainsaws, dangerous things, it makes sense to make sure that we cover our bases. So, thank you.
If I may add, Madam Chair, just to add, I actually totally agree with both Counselors, DePietro and Manna about this one, because the issue is less the heavy, the chainsaws and stuff than it is the unpredictability of the trees. So I appreciate Mr. Soper's willingness to volunteer for this, just be careful while you're doing it.
Okay. All right, moving on, Agenda Item Number 10, Vote to Accept a Donation of Up to $13,150 From the VFW Post 266, I wrote on it, 6655 or 6055? 6055, thank you. For the Purposes of Remodeling, Updating the Lawrence E. McDonald Veterans Room.
Second.
Okay. Do you want to talk about that one? Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I'm sure the Town Manager could say the same things, but very briefly, I'll explain a little bit right out of the minutes, but also I'll point out that Sergeant Major Adams is here and he's able to answer questions if there are any tonight. This is a topic that was an agenda item at the EHS meeting on February 13th. VFW Post 6055 has closed their operation down the street and they very graciously solicited, not solicited, sent a letter through the Town Manager's office volunteering and offering to donate up to this amount of $13,150 to help, we'll say renovate and reinvigorate the Lawrence E. McDonald Veterans Conference Room down on the main floor. So during that meeting, there was a very nice discussion, a lot of good questions. Mr. Adams answered everything quite adequately and then some. We're all very happy and pleased with the offer that has been presented, so quickly from the minutes, I'll just read, I'll start a little bit further down with stuff that's actually relevant. Mr. Adams stated that the money became available as a result of recent business dealings of the post. He said, "The intent of the members is to paint walls, install new flags, install new furniture and refurbish the overall look of the room. There will be appropriate decorations emphasizing Southbridge Veterans' service to our country, including display cases, holding various items and mementos garnered from sources such as the Grand Army of the Republic, G.A.R., the Town Library and local citizenry, and he hopes to have the work done by the fall." There is more within the minutes if anyone cares to read, but I'm very pleased to have had a great discussion with Mr. Adams about this at EHS. I think it's a very generous donation by the VFW Post. I know the Town Manager's been in support of this, as has Counselor Steves, who was also involved in the conversation to try to get this moving, so if there are any questions, I'm sure I'll defer to the Town Manager or to Mr. Adams. Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to make sure, Counselor Steves, if you wanted to comment. First, I'd also like to thank David Adams. This has been an ongoing discussion for many, many months and David's been the, sort of the coordinator between the VFW and my office. When David first came to me, you know, he said that this was something, a prospective thing he could do, that he would talk with the VFW leaders about this and bring forward a plan. And he looked at the room, I can't tell you how many times he's been in Town Hall, looking at that room and trying to think about how he could honor the veterans by utilizing that room and have it be a long-term, I don't know, call it a memorial or recognition of the services of our veterans and those who are, you know, serving in our military. So I want to personally thank David for all of his work because he was really the leader on this and thank the VFW. I know they have sold their building now, but they have such, provided such tremendous service to this community. And please, David, on behalf of all of us, the Town Council and I, thank them for their donation. It's extremely beneficial to not just us here in Town, but all the citizens who are going to come in and use that room. So I'm, truthfully, I'm excited to see the final process and see what it looks like, but it's a tremendously positive donation to the Town and I want to thank all the counselors that were involved in this as well. Again, David, I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 11, Vote to Approve the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants Document for the Good and Valuable Consideration of Improving and Enhancing the Safety and Operations of the Southbridge Municipal Airport.
Second.
Counselor Steves?
That was also on last general government meeting, so I'll just read through the minute section here. That's, Counselor Cummins brought the issue forward and noting the triangle parcel was airport land, but has been used by the landfill for many years for office, flare generator and quantity. Just to clarify what Mr. Polowski was mentioning earlier, there is also a tiny section that's also known, sometimes called the triangle parcel, that's on the other side of the landfill. If you might, if you remember the discussion we had at the last meeting about, about doing some assessment work up on the industrial park land, there's a little triangle on the edge of that map, that's that parcel that he was referring to. But the, but as he clarified, as he clarified, the generally what's called the triangle parcel is a section that's much closer to the airport and it's got the, as I mentioned a second ago, it's got the flare and the offices on it, so that's easily identifiable possible. It was transferred to the council control last year because they intended to cite assignment for landfilling at the, in their expansion plan, but that's not happening now, they've withdrawn it from the state. Because it's being used for landfill-related things, however, the FAA requires restrictive covenants on it to protect aircraft using the runway and we have to do it if, basically if we ever want to use more, if we ever want to get more FAA grants. The Airport Commission voted to support the covenant unanimously last week. Mr. Polowski at that meeting expressed similar concerns to what he cited up here and was concerned about that landfill language, about that it seemed like landfill language in question of its meaning, so we tried, we talked about that for a little while. And let's see, he also asked about whether it would be possible to add language prohibiting contaminated soil. I mentioned at the time that this particular document is FAA wording, such a restriction might be doable separately, but it wouldn't fit here. Counselor Nash mentioned that he had spoken with the manager before the manager went on vacation and agreed with Counselor Cummins' interpretation and then he made the motion to recommend accepting the covenant and Ms. Ryan seconded and it passed unanimously.
Anybody else?
Mike Marquetti, Southbridge resident. I just have a question, possibly a couple of questions. Are we barred by FAA regulations from having a landfill so close to the airport?
I mean, we could explain it, it's, the FAA has restrictions for airspace and we have complied with their restrictions for airspace all this time, so the airport was there long before the landfill. For that big of a landfill.
I mean, that landfill is huge. I've gone up there recently.
Right, but it all has to do with, as you see in the documents, some of the wording, if you've read, I'm sure you have the document, you know, the airspace and so many feet and the angle and the, it's quite, I'm not a, yeah, not an engineer, but it has to do with the airspace and it has to do with the height restrictions. Every so many feet, you have to give it a foot of height and there's an angle, there's an imaginary plane, they call it, and you can't be above the imaginary plane. If you read some of the document, it'll say a tree can't be within 10 feet of the imaginary plane and that all has to do with flying and I'm just not a pilot, so.
Well.
You know, in that respect. So we've complied. The answer to your question is landfills are all around airports, actually. The one we toured years ago down at Crapo Hill, there was a regional airport, I mean a local, yeah, regional airport like ours, very small airport, and it was in Fall River and they, same thing, there was one very close by to a landfill, so you have to just go within the FAA restrictions, there's the height restrictions. That's the best I can tell you.
Okay, the covenant has a restriction on height, correct? And that landfill is quite, quite large. So that was my question, are we already in violation?
No.
So we're not liable for any fines or damages to the federal government?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Nash, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just quickly, there was quite extensive discussion as Counselor Steve said in subcommittee, so if no one else is asking questions from amongst the council members or discussing, I know it was quite extensive. So thank you for having the questions answered while we were in committee.
Thank you for participating and just keep saying, it just keeps a lot of restrictions on that, that already have been there all this time.
Right.
And again, that, the line shifts and we own that land, it's our land, but the restrictions will stay by virtue of our vote and they wanted to make sure of that, so. Okay, anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, motion carries. All right, Agenda Item Number 12, Vote to Authorize the Town Manager to Approve Stantec's Letter of Proposal Dated 2/15/2018 for Professional Service for the Renewal of the Reclaim Water Use Permit in the Amount of $6,850 to Be Funded From the Wastewater Treatment Plant Technical Support Account Number 600.440.5830.18583.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We, basically we heard from you, Counselor DePietro, on this. Do you want to speak anymore on this or?
Just to reiterate, Madam Counselor, it's, it all has to do with the secondary treatment which ends up as a gray water, which is a usable product, which as described to me, we're making a profit on by CLC Millennium Power Plant. The additional $6,850 that would be spent would be for engineering services by Stantec. It was voted unanimously at DPW Subcommittee to recommend the council to approve this file.
Thank you. I do have a question actually to our Director myself. This permit was, I'm going to make a statement, you tell me yes or no. This permit was anticipated, right? It was coming due?
Yes.
Okay, so you had it in the budget to take care of, that's why it comes, it's coming from this account because it was anticipated throughout the year?
We have a technical budget.
You have a technical budget for, for items such as this?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
There was a question asked, how much was in this account at Subcommittee?
Oh, okay.
I do have the answer to that question, so we previously just approved a $52,000 item for our industrial discharge permit, which we actually didn't really know was coming up, but we do have money in a technical account to address technical issues for this reason. We have $50,000 budgeted in that account last year and we're budgeting the same this year. So with that, we're already over that account. In addition, we have a reserve fund, capital reserve fund of $100,000, which we have not touched. This will put that account that we'll need to transfer some money in, $9,250 from reserve will go into the technical account. That allows us to track how much we expend on technical-type services versus other services, so it'll be transferred in.
Throughout the, I mean, there are times when there are permits that are, you know, things are coming due in this nature and that's why we keep, we need to keep some money for.
Correct, or things that we know that we might be asked to do or if we have an issue that we, you know, something major happens and we have to address with some engineering money. It gives us that ability to address a technical issue if something arises. A couple of years ago, we had an issue with the compost, we needed to do some technical research on that. Sometimes, we can't always predict, sometimes we can. We spoke about this a little bit in committee too, that, you know, in theory, we should be able to project these, some of these permits.
Some of them, yeah.
And we can, but sometimes our permits are delayed for whatever reason or not and they aren't on a regular scheduled basis. That just happened with our NITIS permit. It was delayed like three years before we actually got our new permit, so. And when we get those new permits, there's requirements in those permits, some of them are technical issues. We have another technical issue and I'm not sure when it's going to hit, it might not hit until next fiscal year, that we need to relook at our odor control study. It's kind of relooking at the one that was done previously and seeing if any of the improvements that we did. So we know that's coming, we have no idea how much that's going to cost.
Right, okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Agenda Item Number 13, Vote to Accept a Donation of Up to $13,150 From the VFW Post Agenda item number 13, vote to declare the school department's 1995 Ford 350 truck a surplus and be scrapped, with said money being turned over to the general fund after disposal.
Sumo.
Okay, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. This will be a quick explanation, because it was a very short discussion during the EHS meeting on February 13th. Town manager affirmed that this 23-ish-year-old vehicle was at a stage where it was being used for some parts, should be scrapped and junked, as I think the motion indicates. So it was met with unanimous approval by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone with any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous, six, motion carries. Agenda item number 14, vote to declare the following equipment surplus: five-ton roller with an engine date of 1966, cement mixer, grass-cutting broom, generator, riding mower, propane heater, snow blower, tip-type trailer, and parts from a walk-behind mower to be disposed of by the DPW at current scrap metal rate, with money being turned over to the general fund.
Second.
Okay. Counselor DePietro? No, that was under, yeah, that was, yeah, it was DPW. Sorry. You know why? Because Counselor O'Clair was there. So I was just thinking.
Madam Chair, poor Heather has already spent more time between photographs and descriptions of this equipment than it's actually worth. God bless her.
Yeah, no more colored photos.
Let's let her take it, bring it to the junkyard, and call it a day, was the consensus of the Subcommittee unanimously.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add quickly that during the course of that discussion, I think it was Heather, or I don't know if it was either Heather or you, had mentioned that, that we'd probably be getting $185 to $200 a ton for the metals. So it's probably worth more than the stuff that is currently now. So, or anything that we could possibly get from auction.
And to bring something up, auction, we did discuss that quite in depth as to whether these items would be reasonable to put out there for public auction. And ultimately, they were in such bad, bad condition, and the effort to make that happen and delay, the process was just, it was decided that it would be just to scrap. If anyone does want colored pictures of the units, I'm going to ask, because we, it's budget season, we don't need all the colored pictures like this in our packet. So we have to, they're beautiful, but it's a waste of ink. So, and a tree. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous, six, motion carries. Moving on, page two. Number 15, proposed amendments to the Southbridge zoning bylaw introducing a new definition in Article III, definition, Section 300.471, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, add Article IV, Section 401.5 marijuana, add Article IV, Section 401.5A marijuana establishments, add Article V, Section 402.76 marijuana establishment, and Article V, Section 502.139.2, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, and prohibit in each zoning district. New language as follows. Section 300.471, commercial recreational marijuana establishment, a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business for the recreational market. Amend Section 401, regulations applying to all districts to add Section 401.5 marijuana and 401.5A marijuana establishment in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2. All types of marijuana establishments, as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, 94G, Section 1, and as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation, to include, without limitation, all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses shall be prohibited within the town of Southbridge. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by the provisions of Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 and 105 CMR 725.000, as the same may be amended from time to time, or the ability for households to grow for personal use as defined under Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 2. Amend Section 502, table of use regulations to add, quote, "commercial recreational marijuana establishment," end quote, and prohibit in each zoning district under Section 502.76 and 502.139.2, respectively. And the table of use regulations will now show that. Under 502.7, retail business, 502.76 will have commercial recreational marijuana establishment, and it will be no across the board from single-family, two-family, multifamily, retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry, business opportunity district, and central core. And 502.13, manufacturing, processing, and related uses, the number is 502.139.2, that will also list commercial recreational marijuana establishment in the table. And again, it will be no across the board, as previously stated. And this is the second reading. So, thank you, Mr. Comia, for continuing this effort here. You've done a great job on putting this forward. We'll have one more reading, and then this council will decide to adopt this. So, agenda item number six, proposed amendments to the code of bylaws, Town of Southbridge, Section 3-204, municipal building committee, as follows. I don't know, perhaps, before I do this, yeah, we can have you read it. I just, General Government, discuss this, we discussed the need to revamp our municipal building committee bylaw. It, it didn't quite, it was more geared to just a school, a school building project. And the laws, Massachusetts design laws and such, require us to, as we did a few months ago, approve a procedure for designer selection and all kinds of other great stuff. And because of that, our, our building committee bylaw was just, just not right. There was something that, it was, it was about all the buildings in the community, not specific to one project. Somebody might be aware, we used to, we had a school building project committee at one time. But now we're looking at the firehouse, and that, it didn't apply to them, really. So with a little bit of work, changed up a bit of the language, and we believe that through the General Government Subcommittee and communications with numerous people and the office, that this, and the DPW Director, and Matt, and a few other people who were originally part of the process for the firehouse building committee, that the document that we're putting forward here in the bylaw will comply and will be better suited for the community. So what you have here, though, just to be very clear in the notes, in case anyone pulls these, this record, did not want it to be, to disappear, wanted the public to know, anything that is obviously struck was original language, anything in red is new language. And we've left it completely intact. But Counselor Steves can read this for us, the first reading, and he'll just read what is pertinent, what the bylaw will actually be, should it get accepted.
And specifically, that is, Section 3-201.4, establishment, there shall be a municipal building committee, NBC. Oh, I'm leaning on it. Thank you. I was leaning on it. I'll read that again. Section 3-204.1, establishment, there shall be a municipal building committee, NBC, specific to each municipal building project, appointed by the town manager, subject to confirmation by the town council, consists of seven members. Six members of an NBC shall be appointed by the town manager. In making appointments to an NBC, it should be an NBC, but, the town manager shall seek to include in its membership a professional engineer, an architect, an attorney, and a person representing the building and construction trades. The seventh member of a municipal building committee shall be appointed by, by the school committee if the project is school-related. In all other cases, a person related to the proposed project shall be appointed. For example, a project related to the fire station, a member of the fire department shall be appointed by the department head and confirmed by the town council. This is referred to Charter, Section 4-3-1 and 4-3-2. Section 3, 3-204.2, authorities and responsibilities. Whenever any construction or reconstruction of a building or other facility is authorized, a municipal building committee shall be responsible for all work in connection therewith, including site planning, preliminary architectural plans and drawings, detailed architectural plans and drawings, all bid documents, and construction supervision, subject to the designer selection procedures adopted by the town council in compliance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 7C, Sections 44 to 57, designer selection law. The municipal building committee shall meet regularly with the town manager to discuss his ongoing work program and to provide for an orderly interface with other municipal entities. This is the first reading, and we will have another one probably the next meeting.
Ms. DePietro?
Thank you. And first, I want to thank the council for moving forward on this issue. Obviously, there was some confusion when we were talking about the firehouse building project. So I want to thank you for doing that. I want to point out a couple of things in, just for clarification, and maybe perhaps to clean it up a little bit the way it's written. If you get down to where it says, "person related to the proposed project shall be appointed," it doesn't say by who. I know your example shows it later. But you really don't want the example to say, you want to say, who shall be appointed there. I don't care if you guys want to keep it department head. I'd recommend, though, that you say, "shall be recommended by the relevant department head and approved, appointed by the town manager and confirmed by the town council," only because I don't know of any other process where department heads make appointments. But if you want to leave it by department, either way, I'm going to ask the department head for the appointment anyway. But, but that would seem to me more appropriate and consistent with the way our language is written right now. So either way, you guys want to do it, and I'll read the language again if you want. But you need to, you definitely need to clarify, you don't want to have how, how they're appointed in your example, you want to have that in the, in the actual drafting. Agreed?
Thank you.
Okay. So would you like me to read my thought again, or?
I got it.
So I would put, "shall be," after "shall be," recommended by the relevant department head, and appointed by the town manager, and confirmed by the town council. I think that just cleans it up.
Yeah.
So we'll put that in, and we will do another reading on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we'll put it on for a while.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Oops.
Okay, which means in your example, you'd have to change the example, too. So just make the example consistent with the language I just gave you, that's all.
Okay. And now, it brings us to Counselor's forum. And we will start with Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to send out a huge thank you to Counselor Steves for his work on my DPW Subcommittee minutes. Unfortunately, the young lady, Michelle Nichols, who does, normally does inform me, has been struck with an illness. But I would hope that in the future, I would not put that burden on him again. But again, thank you, and kudos, counsel.
Counselor Men?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just a little bit, a couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to get out in, in the community and speak with some citizens. And I plan on doing that over the next few weekends as well. To, some concerns came up about the financial state of our town in regards to the money we're losing from Casella, concerns for the school, big concerns. And, you know, I've talked to a couple people, and, you know, before the referendum, the vote, the non-binding vote, and I will continue to say that, it was stated up here that we took the royalty money out of our operating budget, which is true. But it was used for other things, and was set aside for other things, mandated funding for retirement funds and whatnot. We're going to be losing that money. You're shaking your head, no. So, am I wrong? I'm inaccurate in saying that some of that money was set aside for mandated funding of the retirement funds. So we never used the $3 to $4 million.
Can I answer through you, Madam Chair?
Sure.
So, so the $920,000 that was used in the operating budget is not the same money that was used for the funding of the retirement fund and the OPEB benefits. So it's two different sections of money. The operating money that was used in the budget is no longer being used in the budget, but there is some of the $4 million, the bigger number, you're correct, using for the pension and for the OPEB benefits.
Okay. So either way, we're losing that money. I'm correct in saying that, right? So now we have to find that money from something else. I'm correct in saying that, too, right? Because we're going to be losing that money, we have to find the money someplace else.
For the, my answer to the question would be, for the OPEB benefits, we should, because that's a problem going forward. For the pension money, we could just decide to follow the schedule that we're already lined up to do for the payoff of the unfunded liability pension money. That's, that was based on a 20-year schedule that we agreed to, we were paying off that, that money faster than we're required to. So that $250,000 for the OPEB, you would be correct, we need to find some way to do that. Other words, otherwise, our liability will continue to increase for OPEB liability.
Okay. So either way, we're still losing the $3 to $4 million, and some of that covered capital projects. Okay. So now, we still have to come up with some money. But now we got, I heard you mention the charter school. And I heard you mention the charter school, too, before the vote last year. You know, a couple months before the vote, you said that it's going to be almost $1 million, you know, for the charter school. And then to sit up here and say that we're not in a financial crisis, and we're losing $3 to $4 million. I mean, these are the concerns, not only with me, but with the people I spoke with. I even had one resident ask me, how do we keep Casella here? Because they understand that they are a business in our community, that wanted to do business in our community, and was willing to work with us. And they, you know, they did, they did help out in a lot of areas where they didn't even have to help out. And some of these people that I spoke with realize that. And they're, you know, a couple of them upset because we're not business-friendly. So, I mean, this is, some of the conversations that I had with citizens out there, and their concerns are real. And, you know, the taxpayers, we're paying for it. We're, you know, they're, they're paying for it, I'm a taxpayer, many taxpayers up here, we're all paying for it. Even those who don't pay taxes directly are paying for it. So I guess my question to you is, where are you going to find this other $3 to $4 million that we're losing?
That's a big question for tonight.
That is a big question.
Feel free to answer it.
It sure is, Madam Chair.
So, but, I mean, it's, it's Counselor's forum, and I get to ask that question. So I'm asking that.
Sure. I'd be happy to do my best. And Chairwoman is quite correct, it is a very complicated question. The, the revenue to the town, if you consider the value of the curbside collection is actually well over $4 million. But that is not all dollars, so to speak. It's, it's expenditures that they're paying for that, that hopefully in 2027, we'll have to deal with that issue in terms of curbside collection. I'm not truly as worried about the Casella money, because we made up for a lot of the operating budget money, and even the capital money, we've made up for that already. So we're fairly good shape. Our biggest problem as it relates to the Casella funding is that we will not be able to pay off the pensions faster than we're currently doing. And I'm concerned about the $250,000 of OPEB. Some towns haven't put any money aside to offer OPEB, but we have about $1 million that we've set aside because we had the Casella money. To me, we still have to find a way to address that $250,000, keep trying to build up money in that OPEB account to protect the town for the long term. So, you know, the Casella problem is a problem. And, and I will be very clear, life would have been easy if we still had the $4 million in Casella money. You're correct. One way or another, we're losing that value. How that impacts our budget is not as bad as it used to be because of changes we, this council made over the last couple of years. My bigger concern for the fiscal '19 budget, which is what we're working on right now, is the charter school issue. That is going to have a huge impact on our budget, and it's going to have the same kind of impact, at minimum, that the $920,000 of Casella money last year that we took out of our budget is going to have this year. A lot of that is going to be dependent on a couple of things. One is the money we get for Chapter 70 funding by the state of Massachusetts for our school system. We've already said to the school system that they're going to have to reduce their budget this year. We cannot take money that we would have normally given to the school system and now give it to the charter school. It's going to have a major impact on their budget, right? But also, what will have an impact is 67 students, at least in the current school year, have have left our school system and gone to the charter school. So there can be some cost savings within our current school system budget. The question is, and what I don't believe can occur, is, you know, cutting expenses for 67 students is not going to line up to all the money we lose from the charter school issue. So a lot of this is some things we're actually looking at now. What will be the Chapter 70 funding? We've had a lot of discussions with the finance director of the school system about that. There seems to be some issue with the state and how they set up the Chapter 70 formula this year, that there might have been some mistakes that the legislature is looking at, how to correct, that might give us some more money in the Chapter 70 formula. But it is a very open question at this time right now, exactly how we're going to deal with that. But it is going to have, I'm not going to lie to you, it's going to be, it is the problem of the fiscal '19 year budget is the charter school revenue, and that, that is going to make this budget extremely difficult.
And I understand that, but we knew about the charter school. We knew about the charter school a long time ago, but we did, we didn't advocate for, certain people advocated for certain things, and I feel the ball was dropped somewhere. And it's, the people feel it out in the community, and I'm just expressing what they're feeling.
And that's fair, Counselor Manah. We have reached out, and I think that the council saw, I mean, I reached out to our state senator, our state rep, I reached out to Desi, I reached out to the governor's office about this charter school problem. I've documented that all in paperwork that I've sent, and I've actually sent you guys a copy of it. We need to continue having that discussion with Desi and the governor's office. The ball hasn't been dropped. The problem is that this problem was created by the state of Massachusetts by opening that charter school right next to us, and the funding mechanism, in my opinion, and I think the opinion of most people in the state, is that the funding mechanism to fund students who go to charter schools is not appropriate for the towns in Massachusetts. And it's a serious, serious problem, but it's a problem that's out of Southbridge's control, it's out of town's control, it's really in the hands of the governor and legislature.
That's, that's fine, but when I, when you sat up here and you said, "We are not in a financial crisis," and we are in a financial crisis, that was misleading the community. And, you know, I'm just going to put it out there on the record, I support charter schools, and I support school choice. And so, and that's it, and, you know, the weather's starting to get nice, so just be careful for the kids on their bikes, riding their bikes, riding their skateboards, rollerblading, whatever they do, just watch out for the kids, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manah. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. First, I hope that my shirt wasn't too bright tonight. I can see myself on the screen and not happy. I love the color, but this was actually an homage to another man named Rick Nash, who's now a Bruin. Go Bruins. Agenda Item Number Five, at EHS on Thursday, 6:00 p.m., George Parent Community Room. Discuss the town manager's financial plan for closure of the Southbridge landfill. There's some interesting numbers that are in a spreadsheet that were part of a memo dated May 24, 2017. We'll be discussing that on Thursday night. Publix invited to that meeting, of course, as well as all counselors. A couple of quick things for this evening. I know that most counselors, if not all, were on an email from WCAC about Read Across America, which is Friday. I'm happy to participate, hope to see some of you there. Also, wanted to report that I had a fantastic visit to the Optical Heritage Museum about a week and a half ago. Very grateful for the experience and the little, the great bit of learning that I did thanks to Dick Whitney and to Janine. Thank them very much for their time, and I'm so glad that I finally made it over there. There's another visit in my future. I'll also point out that, like Counselor Manah said, with the weather getting better, I have been spending a lot of time outside, over at Westville in particular, and down at some of the trails across town. Great time to be outside, the trails are in great shape from what I've seen, so please make full use of any of the resources that are at our disposal. One last thing is that I had the pleasure of going to Jacob Edwards Library today, try to get there every so often. I spoke with Margaret about a couple of things, one of which pertains to the Veterans Room, as a matter of fact, as I may have indicated in part of the reading of the minutes, there are photos that hopefully can be included in any of the renovations. A lot of photos are available on the Jacob Edwards Library Flickr account, and I'm not a social media nut, I know it's an app or a site, but I did see some very interesting photos up there. I hope folks will take a look, go to the Jacob Edwards Library website, you can connect. Also point out some of the other great things that have been going on over at the library, including the tax series with resources that may or may not be from, with our own locale, and some really nice displays. There's a nice display there now from a local artist and someone who works at the library. So with that, thank you for a good meeting. That's all.
Counselor Morris?
I am all set, thank you.
And a few words. Counselor? Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually like to follow up with what Counselor Manah said a few seconds ago. I've got a couple of questions for you, if you have them. I know that other towns have already gotten their, their state cherry sheet aid. Do you know what those figures are yet?
I don't have them with you, you're correct, the finance director has them, and this goes to the question or comment I was making to Counselor Manah. The actual Chapter 70 money, we didn't see a big increase like we were expecting in this year's money. We are told that there's been an error made, not just in Southbridge, in a number of communities, and that that number is being relooked at, and we could be potentially, I hate to say a number, but could be hundreds of thousands of dollars short from what we should be expecting. The legislature is supposed to deal with that issue. The finance director for the school system is very engaged in that process, along with other communities are interested in that issue. Even if we got more money, that doesn't resolve our problem.
No, it doesn't.
But it will help some, any money we get is helpful. So it's something we're obviously following very, very closely. But yeah, the cherry street money is in, you know, the, if you heard the governor's comments, the cherry street money is growing at the same rate as the growth of state revenues that are coming in. So the numbers are fairly good, they're not great, but we're not hurting as a result of any of that. So I forget if it's three and a quarter percent or whatever that number is, Gus, but I can get you the exact numbers if you'd like them.
If you could email them to us.
We have to.
And the other question, it's kind of related, is that you mentioned kids going to the charter school, and have you heard anything from the state about what we likely to be getting for, I understand that, I don't remember exactly what the number was, it was somewhere around 100, maybe higher, of kids that are coming in from Puerto Rico because of Hurricane Maria? How is that affecting our school district?
Yeah, the number I heard is about 87 children, which is a significant amount of kids. We haven't heard about the revenue that's going to come with those kids yet. As you recall, last year they gave like a paltry $5,000, which was laughable. But they're supposed to be looking at that number, and we're supposed to get money that follows those children as well. Again, it's another issue that the finance director of the school system is following very closely, but I have not been given a number to that yet. But you're right, it's about 87 children. Significant, significant amount of kids, so those 67 or whatever we lose to charter school, we're getting back anyway, which is why, you know, when we've asked the school system to give us, to bring forward a very tight budget. In other words, zero. There's no other way to say it. We've asked them to bring forward a zero budget, knowing that there are cuts that they can make that are reasonable. That's the goal we've set for them, and that's what they're working on, but we haven't gotten their budget yet. But it's, it's not something like it to be more, but that's where we're, that's our direction.
Just to clarify, for the sake of people out there listening, you mean zero, zero increase, not a zero budget.
Zero increase, not zero budget, right.
Yeah. We do have schools to pay for, yeah. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, Counselor Clementson and I went to the zoning board update committee this afternoon, and I just want to kind of update you guys where things stand. We're kind of, at this point, we're talking about the first, the first draft of our proposed zoning changes. We don't even have all of the text yet. Judy is in the process of sending it all to us. We're going to be making some comments on what we read. I've only read, I've only had a chance to read the first two sections so far, personally. I don't know where anyone else stands. So we're throwing around a whole bunch of different ideas about a bunch of different things, and among the things, among the things that we talked about this afternoon that we need to deal with are, for example, things like what we're going to do as far as the amount of square feet downtown for properties versus other parts of town. We were talking, we're going to probably get to look at, probably going to end up looking at the town, the downtown central core area somewhat separately. We're talking about change, kind of revamping a little bit of how some of these zones are laid out and, and what their, what their requirements are going to be for them, so, and if you have comments and questions and whatnot, you know, let us know, and that's, this is an opportunity to throw your, your ideas into, into contention so that we can know what people think about them. You can contact me, you can email me at counselorgus@gmail.com and let me know what you think, if this is something that's down your alley. There's a whole bunch of issues that we're going to deal with. It's a very complicated process, we'll be doing it for the next six, six or seven months or thereabouts, and the idea is to hopefully get something done by the, by this fall, and then we'll have to go through the process of, of doing the whole zoning bylaw reading, which I hate to imagine what that was going to look like, having to read pages and pages. I don't know what we're going to do about that up here, but, so, that's kind of where things stand. It's, I don't have a lot to say at the moment because it's really early in the process, and it's kind of cumbersome, so.
That's good.
That's all I have to say, I think.
I think, I think one of the other things might be lifted, talking about the processes, a lot of times people complain here about the permitting processes, and they're looking to incorporate that into the overall document, which is really important, and as you said, it's a lot of work, I comment on that. And it is policy. They are encouraging, you have to understand, you know, we are the policymakers here, so regardless of what that review committee, eventually it comes to us. So I, if you get a chance to attend one of their meetings, or if nothing else, review the material that gets emailed to you, and if you have some input that you would like to offer, do so. They are looking for that, especially from the council, because it will be something that we will have to vote on, so, or the next council will have to vote on. Either way, you need to be prepared for what it is. Okay.
And the next council meeting is going to be Monday, March 12, at 7:00 p.m. here in the chambers.
Do you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.